Mr. Levin?
Here.
Ms. Melby Kelly?
Here.
Mayor Masson?
Here. And if everyone just commute and I will do the pledge allegiance, then we'll continue from there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so this evening, we're going to, I'm just gonna put down just some things that we are going to be talking about. First of all, I'm going to have the staff give us a report of the findings they have found and other things, and also to read to us the ordinance in front of us, so that everyone is clear on it. After that, then I will ask council members if they would like to make a comment or a question about the ordinance, and I will do like what we did last time. I will go by each council member. Then that way, we won't be going back and forth. That way, everybody has a chance to talk and make a comment. After that, then we will open it. I will ask for a motion and a second. When we have a motion and second of the ordinance that we are talking about, I will open it up for a public hearing at that point. I believe we have twenty-nine guest citizens that would like to speak, and I would ask them to keep it to two minutes or under. And that will give us to the forty-eight minutes. I'm gonna keep it up to an hour. So if we are under an hour and no one has signed up that does want to speak, we can give them at that time a chance to voice their opinion on it. So having said that, I'm going to go ahead and start with the hearing of the amendment or the ordinance, which is the public. Go ahead.
We need to do roll call.
Oh, I did. We just did the introduction.
Renee, the city clerk is gonna just provide some introduction by way of the public comment, similar to things went over, but we, because this is a special meeting, we've included a public comment or public hearing component to this. I think it's important to kind of lay that out officially. So with that, Ms., city clerk will move forward with that formal statement before I start mine.
Okay.
The special meeting in the Mankato City Council is being conducted electronically pursuant to Minnesota statute as attendance at the regular meeting location is not feasible due to the current health pandemic and emergency declaration. As always, the public is invited to view the meeting live on the city's website. Tonight's special meeting can also be viewed on KTV, which for charter is channel one eighty-one and consolidated channel seven. Several methods were provided for public comment prior to tonight's meetings, such as surveys, sound off Mankato, and a web form on the city's website. A deadline was established in order to allow for comments to be distributed to the city council before the hearing, as well as to provide a time to generate a list of those individuals wishing to speak. If you are in attendance on this webinar and have signed up to speak, you will be acknowledged when the public hearing is opened and called upon accordingly in the order in which you were signed up. Speakers will be limited to two minutes.
With that, with that, Mayor, I would ask that Deputy City Manager Allison Zelms read a copy of the ordinance word for word. You can also find that copy of that ordinance on the city's website for this, tonight's meeting. So with that, Ms. Zelms.
Thank you, Mr. Hinches, Mayor and Council, and those in attendance. I just do want to point out, we do have about ninety-four people as of right now who are in attendance. The emergency ordinance under section two point one five of the Mankato City Charter relating to COVID-19 and face covering requirements in accordance with CDC guidance when indoor, within indoor spaces of public accommodation, number twenty twenty dash four. Whereas on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, Governor Walz issued emergency executive order twenty dash zero one, declaring a peacetime emergency and coordinating Minnesota's strategy to protect from COVID-19. And whereas Governor Walz signed executive order twenty dash fifty-six to rescind the stay-at-home order put in place by executive order twenty dash forty-eight and included in the order that all Minnesotans are strongly encouraged to wear manufactured or homemade cloth face covering when they leave their homes and travel to any public setting where social distancing measures are difficult to maintain, example grocery stores and pharmacies, and to follow face covering guidelines issued by Minnesota Department of Health and the Centers for Disease Control until this executive order is rescinded. Such face masks and coverings are for source control to help limit the person wearing the covering from infecting others. And whereas it is a priority that race and equity be of paramount consideration in enacting and carrying out emergency regulations during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the data shows that older individuals and those suffering from underlying conditions are prone to more severe disease, and also shows that Black, Indigenous, people of color, and immigrant community members are testing at a higher rate with Black and Hispanic community members accounting for a higher percentage of cases. And whereas the city's workers and other essential workers continue to provide essential services during this emergency, and some of these critical workers face an outsized risk of exposure, and we must protect these essential workers from infection. And whereas health officials are increasingly urging non-medical workers to wear non-medical grade cloth face coverings to help curb the spread of COVID-19 by preventing the transmission of respiratory droplets that contain the virus. And whereas public health experts have determined that it is possible to transmit COVID-19 even before a person shows symptoms. And whereas public health experts have determined that the use of a cloth face covering may reduce the risk of transmission by an infected person as a force multiplier for physical distancing, hand washing, and other prevention measures, understanding that face coverings are not recommended as a replacement for these activities. And whereas as state leaders continue to dial back restrictions in spaces of public accommodation, the city has redoubled its efforts to maintain good hand hygiene, respiratory etiquette, and physical distancing while proceeding cautiously and with a focus on slowing community spread and avoiding unnecessary strain on our medical system. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Mankato that the following emergency regulations be enacted effective July tenth, twenty twenty-one. And any individual who is over age two and able to medically tolerate a face covering shall be required to cover their nose and mouth with a mask or cloth face covering in accordance with CDC guidance when in indoors, when in indoor spaces of public accommodation. Two, all employers of businesses that are spaces of public accommodation as defined by this ordinance shall require their employees to wear a cloth face covering whenever such employees have face-to-face contact with the public. Definitions. Section three, a space of public accommodation means a business, refreshment, entertainment, or recreation facility or an institution of any kind, whether licensed or not, whose goods, services, facilities, privileges, advantages, or accommodations are extended, offered, sold, or otherwise made available to the public. Examples include retail stores, rental establishments, city of Mankato government buildings, and service establishments, as well as recreational facilities and service centers. In addition to establishments and facilities that offer food and beverage not for on-premises consumption, including grocery stores, markets, convenience stores, pharmacies, drugstores, and food bantries other than those portions of the place of public accommodation. Spaces not considered places of public accommodation are health care facilities, childcare facilities, residential care facilities, congregate care facilities, and juvenile justice facilities, crisis shelters, soup kitchens, or similar institutions, restaurants and food courts inside the secure zones of airports. This would also include indoor spaces within the campus of Minnesota State University of Mankato. Exceptions, a face covering or mask shall not be required for children two years of age and under. Face coverings or masks may pose a risk of choking, strangulation, or suffocation to infants and young toddlers. Eating or drinking, persons may remove face coverings while eating or drinking when seated at a table with at least six feet of social distance from other patrons, provided that they recover their faces when interacting with persons not at their tables or when not seated. Indoor athletic facilities, fitness centers, commercial gyms, et cetera. Indoor athletic facilities shall follow CDC guidelines. Patrons are not required to wear face coverings or masks while actively participating in permitted athletic activities, but are encouraged to wear face coverings when not actively training. Movie theaters and other indoor entertainment venues, persons may remove face coverings when seated in their assigned seat with at least six feet of social distance from other patrons, provided that they recover their faces when not seated. Cloth face covering means a covering that fully covers a person's nose and mouth, but is not a medical grade mask. A medical grade mask means an N-ninety-five, KN-ninety-five surgical or other masks that would be appropriate for a healthcare setting or a setting in which direct patient care is provided. Additional terms. A violation of this emergency regulation may be enforced by the issuance of warning letters, administrative citation, and/or misdemeanor prosecution per Minnesota statute twelve dot four five and city code. Licensed establishments, voluntary compliance will be requested with warning being issued. Further violations would constitute a strike or administrative penalty. Resolution R dash sixteen dash twelve twelve dash two seven two and matrix to include strike and corresponding administrative penalty, which is two hundred dollars plus associated court fees. Unlicensed establishments, voluntary compliance will be requested with warning being issued. Further violations would constitute an administrative penalty of two hundred dollars plus associated court fees. Individuals, patrons, voluntary compliance will be requested with warning being issued. Further violations would be cited as a misdemeanor offense per Minnesota statute twelve dot four five. The city could request that the district court designate this violation as a payable offense approved by the Minnesota Judicial Council. The payable offense would follow the class-two nuisance violation of one hundred dollars plus applicable court fees. Individuals could elect to not pay the fine and choose a court appearance process with a judge prescribing a different penalty enforcement. Repeated violations by an individual or a business would be handled the same. The city would seek voluntary compliance and cite only when the individual or business refused to comply with a request for compliance. This ordinance shall, in accordance with the provisions of section two point one five of the Mankato City Charter, become effective immediately, although we have prescribed here July tenth, and shall be published and printed as prescribed for other adopted ordinances. This ordinance shall stand repealed as of the sixty-first day following the date on which it was adopted unless it is extended, rescinded, superseded, or amended as adopted by the city council.
Thank you, Allison.
Madam Mayor, just to kind of expand on particular points brought up in the, in the reading. First of all, I'd like to point out that we have, in drafting this ordinance, used CDC guidelines in section one where we essentially laid out that the ordinance for individuals in, in indoor spaces of public accommodation would be, require ages two and older and able to tolerate a face covering be required over the mouth. So we use two and older as the starting point for this ordinance based on CDC guidelines. I would point out as our review of additional ordinances that we could find, there's only two in many in Minnesota that have adopted an order of this nature. Minneapolis, and they've indicated and use CDC guidelines as anyone under the age of two is being exempt. The city of Edina passed a urgency three-day order by the mayor effective today, twelve oh one, on July sixth. They will be taking up a longer-term order later this week when that, that order is about to expire. They have exempted anyone under the age of five. We've managed to find two other local governments outside of the state. City of Phoenix has exempted under the age of six. Dallas County in Texas, under the age of ten, but advises that the CDC recommends for people two years and older. Incidentally, the state of Texas has adopted an ordinance or an executive order. Theirs is a lot more comprehensive. It includes all face coverings outside of the home, and that is under the age of ten. So we weren't able to kind of expand and look at that other than the CDC guidelines, and those are the exceptions. The second point that I'd like to note is, again, employees of businesses that are spaces of a public accommodation, public accommodation are required to wear cloth face coverings whenever in direct contact or face-to-face contact with the public. So for example, I would use this as if you were in the front of house business, servicing customers either at cash register on the floor of the business, but you would be required to wear a face covering as an employee. If you were someone in the back of house, essentially not having contact and where the public cannot enter, such as a loading zone, those types of things, that's up to the individual business. So those individuals would be exempt, could take their masks off, essentially removed. And I noticed that is, as I looked at some different establishments, the warehouse workers doing stocking might be pulling their masks off as they're going into the back rooms in some cases, but then putting them back on as they're dealing with customers or out on the floor. So that's the second point. Spaces of accommodation vary, but generally anybody or any business, in terms of business or refreshment, entertainment, anything that's open to retail or, or service, would be required to, to meet the provisions of this ordinance for both their customers and customer service, but also patrons of their businesses. One point that we have exempted is educational institutions, as those rules will be looked at directly. But there may be instances where the public is coming on to a school or a higher education institution and has access to the front area. That's essentially would require the use of masks, masks by the receptionist and likewise the patron. The spaces not considered places of public accommodation, obviously healthcare facilities as they promongate their own rules, childcare facilities as that's promulgated under the executive orders of the governor, residential care facilities, congregate care, juvenile justice or justice facilities, crisis shelters, soup kitchens, and similar institutions. Restaurant and food courts by executive order are, have their own special place in the statute. I would point out that we have clearly exempted Minnesota State University as a Minskew institution, as currently as the councils wear nuisance code violations. They essentially under the state of Minnesota make up their, their own laws, and there's only certain things outside of the campus that apply. So they are clearly exempt from this area. I would also note that our government buildings, we list the city of Mankato. We don't, we have not included Blue Earth County government buildings or any state and federal government buildings that may be either owned by the state or under some type of lease arrangement by the state or the federal government. They again, essentially make up their own rules. So those are some high points. There are a number of exceptions here, and likewise, when we reviewed other states and other cities, they make numbers of exceptions. Well, certainly, as I pointed out earlier, there is exceptions for children under a certain age. And in our case, it's two years. And again, that was just simply based on the CDC guidelines. Eating and drinking establishments, patrons are allowed to remove their face coverings when at a seated table socially distanced away from another group. The state has limited that to tables of four. However, when they come into the place, when they go to get up and, and go to the restroom or to obtain a drink, they would be required to have their face coverings on. Or in the case of playing amusements, pool, darts, those types of things in a, in an establishment. Another point here is indoor athletic facilities, obviously, were opened up. Those are fitness centers, commercial gyms, or school athletic facilities. And they follow CDC guidelines. Again, patrons are not required to wear face coverings or masks when actively participating in permitted athletic, athletic activities, but are encouraged to wear them, wear the face coverings when not actively training or participating. Again, in the case of movie theaters and indoor entertainment venues, patrons may remove their face coverings when seated in assigned seats with at least six feet of social distance. Again, that can be a group of, of one household, which can have a block of seats, or it could be individuals or a couple, but they could remove their face covering when they're in their assigned seats. Movie theaters will be kind of the obvious choices there. And then essentially cloth face coverings mean a fully covered nose and mouth with, which is, does not have to be a medically graded mask or covering. Again, that could be a face covering. In the case of Edina, their ordinance is very broad. It kind of does follow the lines, but I would point out that they are clear medical conditions that make it difficult to breathe would be an exemption. Individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing or those who care for or interact with persons who are hearing impaired, that would be an exemption that they put in place. And persons otherwise unable to remove a face covering without assistance would be an exemption. Phoenix kind of listed again in their particular cases, medical conditions, children under six, religious beliefs, restaurant patrons when they're eating and drinking similar to us. Again, they have a exercising provision. And in that particular case, they really do make reference to outdoor face coverings there. People engaging in organized team and group sports is an exemption, similar to our exemption. People in settings where it's not practical and feasible to wear it, including, for example, dental services. State of Texas, again, as I mentioned, has similar exemptions as does the case of Phoenix. But I would point out that Phoenix, or excuse me, the state of Texas and Dallas County, their face covering or executive orders and orders cover outdoor activities except for under certain conditions. So our ordinance is as comprehensive as we could get it and pretty much following where we could interpret CDC guidelines or, and/or executive orders that provided certain exceptions. I would also point out, under enforcement, there was a considerable discussion about enforcement. Because this is an executive emergency order in terms of an ordinance, there has to be a trigger point in terms of penalty for not wearing them. So if you look at our section, certainly, we've broken it down into three areas. Certainly, an individual, whether that be an employee for some reason who would be cited, or a individual patron. Those particular cases, we've tried to make the penalty a class-two misdemeanor, a hundred dollars. That's like a petty misdemeanor, I guess, in common terms. There is a court cost of this because we can't, at this point and under emergency basis, set up a petty misdemeanor through an administrative charge. So we've essentially used Minnesota statute twelve point four five. We would petition the courts to classify it as a hundred dollar fine plus court costs. That would make it a payable offense. It's would, the individual cited would not be required to appear. The second part of this is licensed establishments. Under licensed establishments, we can use administrative scale because we're not penalizing in individuals. We would have to write a ticket in the case of a misdemeanor offense to an individual, such as the general manager or the owner on premise. So in that particular case, we're using our administrative charges section, which basically, again, provides a voluntary compliance with a warning, and then essentially a strike or an administrative penalty, of which we've established our matrix at two hundred dollars plus any associated hearing officer or court fees. Unlicensed establishments, that would be something that does not require a city license. That would be more typically a grocery store, a convenience store. In some cases, they are required to have license, I should say. That's not a good example, grocery store, any type of service establishment. And in that particular case, again, we would issue a warning, and then the further violations would constitute the same administrative penalty at two hundred dollars plus any associated costs if, if we had an unsuccessful hearing examiner determination. Again, in all cases, individuals, patrons, and licensed establishments would get a warning first with further violations under our authority under Minnesota statute twelve forty-five. Case of an individual's citation, it would be, we'd attempt to make it a payable misdemeanor offense of a hundred dollars. In case of an unlicensed or licensed establishment, we'd use our administrative authority. So that's essentially what we have laid out in terms of this ordinance. I would point out again for the public and the council, an emergency ordinance, unlike a traditional ordinance, requires five affirmative votes. You can make amendments at this meeting of substance. So amendment of any kind, including amendments of substance. For example, changing the applicability ordinance to an age group, for example. That's a pretty substantial amendment. Normally speaking, if you were running a traditional ordinance, you would have to push that final determination, final vote back for, for a meeting or seven days. In this particular case, you could make those substantial amendments at the time of offering a motion. You could offer amendments, they would have to be seconded. You could also go through process, which we commonly refer to as friendly amendments. Those are amendments of non-substance, and you, you could make this again. Person making the motion and the person seconding would have to agree to those amendments if they were offered by someone other than the motion makers and seconds. Important point is, this ordinance automatically expires on the sixty-first date. You can take action on a seventy-two-hour notice to extend it beyond the sixty days, amend it at any time, or even revoke it upon seventy-two-hour notice. And that would come in the form of, at a regular meeting or a special meeting, or a request for a special meeting. So again, it can be extended with five votes. It could be rescinded with five votes. It can be essentially amended with five votes in any form. Also, this ordinance, by its nature, would be superseded with any state ordinance put into place. So if the governor decided to do an executive order for a mask ordinance, anything the state would have been put in place would supersede anything the city has in place. If there's any additional questions, staff can take them. I would point out, there is some additional information that Deputy Director Zelms, Deputy City Manager Zelms, excuse me, can lay out, including some of the information that the council received. We'll summarize that for, and, and for the public. Ms. Zelms?
Thank you, Mr. Hinches, city council members and those in attendance. Just so you're aware, we're at a hundred and thirty-six attendees at this point. I did want to point out that there were a number of individuals who signed up to make public comment. Some of those did sign up to speak. Twenty-nine of those people did sign up to speak. There were a hundred and forty-one individuals. There were a hundred and forty-one individuals through that process that responded. Um, seventy indicated support, sixty-six indicated opposition and five did not list a position. Um, so we will uh, be able to go to um, during the public hearing, the twenty-nine who did sign up. Um, and you do have that information. In addition, the city also um, put out a quick survey and uh, a more sensitive survey and a quick poll On the Sound Off Mankato um, website and that information, including all of the comments Were provided to council earlier today. Um, there were on the larger survey results, eight hundred and twenty-nine individuals who took that survey. Um, and indicated in your information, a vote breakdown based on their location And the information they provided on whether they lived within the city limit, within the city limits or not. Um, and also which ward they lived in. Um, so of the large survey results of the eight hundred and twenty-nine, about sixty percent, Five hundred and three um, indicated support for a face covering ordinance. Thirty-eight percent or three hundred and nineteen indicated um, that they did not support. And seven indicated that they didn't know whether one should be put it, they were unsure if that would uh, be a good idea. On the quick poll, um, there were forty-four percent that responded that they did not support a mask Or, or a face covering ordinance and fifty-five percent, so slightly less, um, that indicated support. And again, on that larger poll, about um, A hundred and sixty individuals who lived outside of the city indicated that yes, they were in support of an ordinance. A hundred and sixty-four that indicated they lived outside the city. So um, four, four additional, um, it's almost half and half indicated that they um, do not support an ordinance. And of the individuals who responded that they did live in the city limits, three hundred and twenty-nine indicated That they were in support of an ordinance and a hundred and seventeen indicated they were not in support of an ordinance. So this isn't a scientific poll, but it, it is information outside of who um, would be able to attend today. Um, in addition, we do have some insights on our um, On social media posts that um, happened between June twenty-first and June thirtieth. During that time period, about forty percent, forty-five percent of all Uh, social media discourse that was uh, talking about city of Mankato was talking about a mask mandate Or face covering ordinance. Um, and in that, about twenty-three percent of all of that discourse, discourse indicated support And twenty percent indicated opposition. So again, very close. Um, the rest, the reason there's not, um, that number only adds up to forty-three percent Is the rest of the discourse was either just comments that didn't indicate support or not. Um, it just was um, additional comments regarding um, and ordinance. Um, so that is a little bit more information. And then finally, you did receive um, a survey today that um, was conducted by Greater Mankato Growth. Um, and it was a survey that was sent to their members. Um, their survey analytics um, also allow them to screen out um, any Responses that did come from the direct links sent to their membership. Um, so there were seven hundred and forty-four verified survey responses. And there's a lot of detail in this report, but um, of all members surveyed, um, forty-six percent indicated support. Fifty-four percent indicated that they did not support a mandatory mask ordinance. And then of senior leadership, which is um, someone that indicated they're an owner, partner, president, or C-suite executive, Thirty-nine percent of the senior leadership indicated support and sixty-one percent indicated opposition. Um, there is additional information about concerns um, regarding whether this would impact business. Um, and that was all provided to the city council um, directly from Greater Mankato Growth earlier today. Um, so I just wanted to be able to provide you that information and let everyone know Who was in attendance that if you did submit a comment either um, through um, Sound Off Mankato Um, filled out a survey, or if you submitted public comments, even if you indicated you didn't wish to speak tonight, That those comments that you submitted also were provided to the city council. You received a lot of comments, so I'm not sure they were able to, to read all of them, but I'm sure they were able to At least get a sense of what some of the public sentiment is um, in, from those informal and unscientific surveys.
All right, thank you, Ms. Zelms. Anything else from staff before we move on to council members?
At this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we are going to go through with the council members asking any questions or comments. And I would like to start with council member Karen Foreman, please. Karen, do you have any comments or questions? You're on mute.
Yes, yes, I'm getting, getting it switched. I'm just a little slow. Uh, I guess I just, first of all, comments, thank you very much to staff for all the work they've done on this. They really spent a considerable amount of time on it and I appreciate that. I also appreciate all the um, phone calls, texts and emails that I receive from the general public. If you contacted me before four P M. Today, I think I got back to you. I, I read your comments for sure and I did try to uh, respond to everyone and let them know that. Um, as I evaluate this, um, our, our numbers in lower county are going up for COVID. That's not the good thing. Um, our, to me, our responsibility is to look at how we protect the greater good of the community. And I'm going to go back to when we did roundabouts on Highway twenty-two, Which was not only about the greater good, because we wanted to eliminate The serious injury and the fatal uh, accidents that were happening on twenty-two. It also happened to be something that cost us a lot of money. Us taxpayers, everyone. And initially, we primarily heard, nobody went around about, I don't like them. After they were in and they were there for a year, All I heard was positive comments about them, how people really liked them. They thought it benefited the community and it was a good thing. And I think a lot of times when we see negative or opposition, I don't want to do this. It's from individuals who have difficulty with change and we all have difficulty with change and that's difficult. But change is good for us sometimes. So I don't think that this change is necessarily bad for us. It's very temporary. We can tell from the polling and even from our contacts that the general public is somewhat split on this. Uh, however, leaning towards more people being positive for it. It's only for sixty days. And if we can do something that helps our community stay healthy, That helps those numbers to stabilize or go down So that the governor doesn't have to come through and shut down everything again. Because to me, part of this is if we will all wear our mask and help the numbers go down, We don't have to go through shutdown again. And I don't know how many of our businesses could stay open if we went through shutdown again. So um, those are my comments. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Foreman, appreciate that. Now for council member Mark Frost, hi, Mark.
How are you doing?
Good, my dear.
Yeah.
Please.
Um, I hope you all got the um, the video from um, Dr. Osterholm?
We did, yes.
You all, you all, did you all receive that?
Received a couple of times from different um, citizens, yes.
Okay. Uh, he is the number one, he is uh, he is the, basically the, The doctor in Minnesota that does this type of, this type of work, has done it for forty-two years, his whole life. And he is the one that came on and just said that they don't work, uh, other than the N ninety-five mask, Which you said has to go to the uh, uh, healthcare professionals, but the masks that we are wearing don't work. Um, because they've got, they allow air in. I mean, just randomly all air in the sides and up into your cheeks or wherever. Uh, that is one of the reasons I do not support this. Um, you know, and when he basically started the conversation with facts versus emotions, I understand the emotions. I mean, I wear a mask every time I go to the store or go to wherever I go. But the fact of the matter is, um, The number of people that are getting them, California supposedly has a uh, back, has a mask ordinance statewide right now And they're one of the leading COVID increases in the nation right now. So uh, I, I would think Dr. Osterholm was right. Um, I would hope he wasn't. I, I would love to support this, but the fact of the matter is, I, I think he's right. That they're not that great a deal. Um, other than that, I got the same emails that Karen got. Uh, you know, we, we've all gotten, I think I still got about a hundred left on my, on my, on my email Uh, server, but um, It's, it, it's a tough choice. I mean, I've been through this before with tobacco twenty-one, which is something I brought forward. And I heard from a lot of people, we're not coming to Mankato if you pass it. Well, didn't quite work that way. But the fact is, this is a totally different thing. This could be for, be with us for years. Um, if it's anything like the uh, twenty nineteen eighteen uh, Spanish flu and uh, pandemic, Which stuck around for about two and a half, three years almost. So I would um, I would suggest, and I've noticed that we did a lot of um, Rewriting of the ordinance from where it was originally. So it's actually a better choice now that what, what, what we've got, no thousand dollar fines. So, but I guess I'm going to stick with the, the no vote. Um, just based on the fact that uh, I don't, I, we've got the top epidemiologists in the nation Uh, talking about it and Anthony Fauci, when he originally started, said masks don't work. Today, he does not say that, but whatever, we um, At this point in time, I guess I'm going to stick to the no vote.
Okay, thank you very much, Mark, appreciate that. We are going to now move to council member Melby Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, good evening, everyone. Um, I just uh, wanted to thank the city staff um, for all the work that they did For giving us the information that we needed to get, for um, pulling information from Social media discourse. I mean, that's really fantastic. Thank you so much for your hard work. Um, I know that uh, you know, we all watched the Osterholm video. Um, I still believe that if we wear masks when we're indoors, Indoors is the danger zone right now. And if we wear masks when we're indoors, we're going to be protecting each other just a little bit more. And why not be proactive? This is really about people's lives, it's about people's livelihoods. It's about businesses, because businesses cannot live through shutting down every six months or every three months. It's not going to work. And I feel as though if we are following the guidelines, Our businesses are gonna, are gonna get busier and we're gonna do a little bit better. I am still in absolute support of this ordinance. I feel it's about the public safety and our public um, health crisis that we're in right now. And um, I am strongly for this and uh, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Jen, appreciate that. Um, we're going to move on now to council member Deacon. Dennis, do you have it, you're on uh, mute.
Okay, thank you, thank you, man. Um, yes, um, you know, I've uh, received a lot of information um, Over the past few weeks on, on, on this. Uh, there's a lot of uh, a lot more, I guess than, you, you, it, it's hard to decide, uh, you know, what, What is uh, what, what information do you go with, you know? Um, everybody is, is giving you their best, their best information. Um, I wear a mask all day at work, uh, don't have a problem with that. Um, I don't have any uh, any problem with uh, any objection to wearing a mask out in public in, in uh, In, in, in businesses and in stores and things like that. Um, and, and as, and as far as uh, the public wearing mask, I, I uh, I, I agree that uh, it, it can hurt to wear a mask. I, I think, I'm not sure how much they help, but I, but I, if you cover your mouth and your cough, this has to help. I, I believe that. Um, but I also, you know, we got some information from one of our medical providers in, in Mankato here. Um, and some uh, good information and some sta- statistics on, on the COVID uh, situation in Mankato. Uh, everything is trending down, hospitalizations, uh, the deaths is all uh, in, in a decrease, Um, which is a very good thing. Um, and I think that, uh, you know, Last week on the June, uh, June twenty-ninth, we were uh, we were uh, presented with some options. One of those options was uh, was uh, option C and that was a voluntary um, a voluntary masking. Um, and, and I, and I supported that. Um, I, I, I do favor that, that approach uh, because of uh, Uh, lessening the burden on, on enforcement. I think that um, that could be, um, that could be a problem. Um, and I, and I think that uh, given, given the statistics of, of where we're at with this, uh, in this area today, Um, I, I, I think that uh, I would support, I would support that, that approach.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Now we move on to council member Hatampa.
Please. Yeah, um, I just want to say that I feel like this has been an impossible situation. It, it's very clear that people are fifty-fifty split and everyone has research that supports what they think. I've tried to listen to everyone, responded to most people up until the last day. I just ran out of time and really tried to contact people in different industries and different professionals To find out how the original ordinance would affect them. From gyms not being able to stay open if you had to be masked To police that are clearly concerned with enforcement, Daycare providers, children whose, who, or parents whose children go to Aces And are in buildings that didn't have air conditioning and what all these things meant to them, Including body shops that they have guys working in the back, not interfacing with customers And working in garages. And really, since the beginning of all of this, my adamant Being opposed to Minneapolis ordinance was that it didn't take into account Any circumstances. It was such a one-size-fits-all, it was potentially criminalizing children, which I just couldn't support. And through this process, I don't always agree with Mr. Hinch's. We haven't agreed on several things over the last year and a half. But over the last week, we've had lots of phone calls, in-person meetings to try to make adjustments To get to a place that makes some common sense accommodations. And I want to understand all the implications and all, have all of the concerns addressed. It, it can't be perfect. We can't make an ordinance that accommodates every single person and I understand that. And I hope that the community knows that, and I believe this for every, every person sitting here, That everyone took this seriously, listened, did as much research, tried to understand everything that they could. Um, I don't think that passing this is going to put Mankato in a bubble. I understand that we're in a unique situation where we have a city that's right across the river And we're not making rules for them. We have the major hospital for our region right here in our city. But I think that a lot of ordinances exist to give law enforcement or public safety a tool To help keep people safe when they can't or choosing not to make good decisions in public spaces Where they could hurt others. Um, so I just want to say that I have, feel like I have given this as much care And concern to this topic as I possibly could. I have lost more sleep than I can even, even explain to you. Um, and I do have, if I can ask Mr. Hinch's um, for two clarifying questions to the ordinance That he read and then when he was giving some recommendations from the other, what the other cities wrote.
Yes, please do. Yes, okay, yes, please.
So you had said, mentioned something about, I believe it was the Phoenix ordinance that specifically says You need to wear a mask except when you can't. And ours doesn't necessarily say that, it says over two. It, like, i- is our wording correct in that manner? About if you cannot wear a ma- I mean, obviously if you have a medical condition and you can't wear it, You shouldn't be expected to.
So what the Phoenix ordinance, and I'm somewhat paraphrasing it, People in settings where it is not practical or feasible to wear a face club covering, Including when obtaining and rendering goods or services Such as the receipt of dental services or medical treatments. So they're, they're confining it, obviously. You can walk into a dental office, and I think this is probably how it would be interpreted. After you sit in a dental chair, you obviously could remove your mask. Um, but it is essentially, those are those instances Where it may not be practical either for the person rendering the service or for the person. Really, I don't know what the rendering would be, but certainly those types of practical Uh, situations, obviously, you can't include it. They also have the eating and drinking. They also have the eating and drinking. They have those other things that again are practical reasons to exempt it. Um, but Phoenix is, is basically putting those exemptions in place and kind of went. Um, as met, as, as far as we could go to, to lay those exemptions out.
Okay.
But um, we have exempted a lot of situations, a lot of businesses outright. So educational institutions that would cover, so for example, ACES.
Right.
Um, uh, the, um, I'm just trying to bring the ordinance up here. Uh, there it is. Um, obviously, it's, it's pretty much a customer to customer. Or customer to customer service that you're really dealing with the ordinance. So there is the exemption for those athletic, indoor athletic facilities, eating and drinking. I would put in Texas, they've kind of went the whole course to, to essentially closing some businesses. Opening back up very quickly and then closing down and then going to a barely. Strict interpretation of masks except for when you're in practical situations. But there's applies to outdoor public spaces also where people would interact. Uh, so, um, you know, the ordinance. It's as perfect as we could make it trying to address as many concerns. And again, relevant to your question on law enforcement, you know, first of all, I would point out that law enforcement. Uh, takes an oath to, to essentially um, enforce ordinances. And the city manager assigns that enforcement. And in this particular case, it would be public. Uh, pu- you know, public uh, safety that would be the primary enforcer of that ordinance. Uh, or this ordinance. That's no different than liquor ordinances or other nuisance ordinances. Some of those are assigned out to different staff. But um, you know, that is their responsibility to enforce those. Local codes, those state statutes and those federal statutes of laws of the land.
The, the other question that I have is under the um, lower down when it talks about the fines and penalties. It says that um, that we're going to petition the court. Is that how it reads? Petition the court for, so that it can just be a fine versus actually. So what happens if they say no? I mean, is there a possibility that they could say no? So if the ordinance passes, but they say no. Does it void the ordinance? Or what's the?
No, it, it would cover under enforcement at twelve forty-five, twelve point four five, which could make it a misdemeanor fine. With a fine payable up to a thousand dollars. That's the difference. A misdemeanor fine. What we're trying to do is classify this as a class two.
Right.
It could have went a whole different process. We could have kind of made this a. I almost put it in a class two ordinance where we essentially go under our local authority to make this. It still has the ability to be challenged in court. Either by the individual or challenged altogether in terms of a class action lawsuit. So either way, whether we go through a misdemeanor process. Um, of classifying this as some type of class two ordinance, which we put in a misdemeanor fine similar to a parking ticket. Um. We do do that, but we still have to have due process for administrative charges, even parking tickets. Where people can take those parking tickets to an administrative hearing officer. So it doesn't remove our ability. It makes it a payable offense either way. Uh, you know, my general opinion, talking with the county attorney who serves as the city attorney, um. Our ordinance is drafted to require a warning. Before we do an actual ticket. So if we were in an instance where um. We would see an employee who we have observed twice in some type of onsite inspection, more than likely liquor license. Who was not wearing a mask, we would simply warn and educate the manager on site. It is up to, in the case of the employees, the business to enforce that upon their employees. Likewise, you know, how uh, this would work. If we were called to a premise with an employee or with a patron. Who chose not to wear a mask and refused to leave the premise, we would be typically called there. We would respond and typically what would happen, as in the case. Of a couple of instances where businesses have had these rules in place already. They've trespassed the patron from coming back. And they have a right at a bar restaurant to do that, just as they have a right at a retail place. So that's gonna be the, the typical process. In a business that would call us to the premise. Likely is not, would nev- I mean, we, we have never, you know, in my time here. When someone was called, the business called us and it was. Based upon their inability to deal with a patron that they've attempted to remove from the premise. We've never, despite there might be violations and underage or something, we've never cited the, uh, the business. Now, there have been instances maybe where we've been called to premise because of fight. There's been other. Circumstances that may have resulted in the, in over-serving or something we've cited. I don't, I see this as the same way. So, you know, we're gonna be called to premise by the businesses, usually. To deal with a customer who is a refusal and then perhaps is a refusal to leave. And that will likely result in a trespass or the, or the patron will leave before we even get there.
Okay. So as it reads right now, if you are over two. We're hoping that it would just be an administrative fine, but you're not positive it could be a parent court.
It, it could, it very well could be unless you, I mean, you, you as a parent of a minor child. Uh, would, would be responsible for that child's actions in terms of juvenile court. But at this point in time, if we issue a citation, I'm just, you know. The, the likelihood of this would be a circumstance where a. Minor child is wandering around at, how to use an example, River Hills Mall.
Okay.
And they are asked to leave by security and they don't leave. That might be an instance where we cite an underage child, an underage or juvenile. I, it could happen. But I think the likelihood of. You being with your family and a, and a number of minor children being in a public place yourself. You're going to be the responsible party, the adult.
Okay.
And is likely gonna receive the citation. But understand. Um, there is a voluntary compliance and warning that is always required. Under all of these circumstances. We have a good tracking system. Uh, if. If uh, the person was warned and cited, we would track that in our records. Uh, that's the chances of, of, of us, the police, coming upon that individual person again is probably not likely. Uh, in the case of the business establishments, we have a tracking system already for that.
Okay. And if, if someone wants to propose an amendment, do we do it now or later?
You do it at the time of motion. Um, so when a motion is made, it can be part of the motion and amendment.
Okay.
Or alternatively, it could be asked for the person making the motion and the person seconding the motion. To accept an amendment. And then finally, after public testimony, once an amendment, a motion is seconded is on the floor, you can open up. Public testimony. Uh, then once the public testimony closes, you could have again, an offer another. Friendly amendment or offer an amendment uh, that would have to be voted on uh, to be included in the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Now on to council member, um, at large, Levin, please, Mike.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I certainly echo my comments and colleagues related to the uh, correspondence. Uh, from the emails to the text messages, phone calls, uh, social media posts as well. Appreciate that. Um, I, quite frankly, I, this is uh, this is always engaging and energizing for me because. I find it uh, amazing that our community, it wants to be engaged in this process. Uh, I contrast that to uh, what's gonna happen this uh, fall. Uh, we will propose a budget of nearly one hundred and forty million dollars. And we will not have a hundred and fifty people wanting to show up and engage in that conversation. We'll be lucky to have five. So there is a little bit of a juxtaposition in my mind as we do this. That being said. Um, I appreciate everybody's thoughts, comments, the email links, uh, the video links. From the extreme folks in our community who feel this is a complete conspiracy. And think that this is absolutely the government controlling their lives and this is all made up. To the folks on the other end that are adamantly opposed to an ordinance as well as those are adamantly supportive of ordinance. And I go back to early uh, April, uh, when I started getting phone calls and emails from, from constituents. Who were social distancing, who were out attempting to, to get groceries. Or just do what they need to do on their daily basis, wearing a mask. And they were confronted with the majority of the community not wearing masks. Fast forward to today, I'm still hearing from those people that same thing. As everybody here on the council has now mentioned that they wear a mask, I find it interesting in the context of. You were wearing the mask to protect others because in the event that you have COVID nineteen. You could spread that to others. That's the premise of this ordinance. It's not to protect you. It's never been about that. And Dr. Osterholm spends a lot of time explaining that in his video, that wearing this to protect yourself from COVID. Is certainly never gonna happen. Now, his reference to wearing a mask to spreading. Is a lot less of that time of that twelve-minute video. So I think when you go back to June, when he made that video compared to today, his comments based on scientific data and research would be different. Now, can't speak for him, but again, the context of what he was referring to is that. Uh, as I look back and think of two thousand and six, when we discussed indoor smoking and the lack thereof, that ordinance. And we banned indoor smoking in restaurants and bars. Uh, we use that visual of someone exhaling. And that gave people a very visual understanding of how their personal actions in, impacts public health. And uh, you know, I, you can find lots of videos and graphics out there that'll show you that. While wearing a mask, you're preventing that from going further. So. Again, I appreciate all the hard work. I'm looking forward to hearing from the twenty-nine people that are registered. As well as anyone else here tonight to hear what they have to say, because this is an engaged community decision and a conscious effort. To listen to everybody and whether we agree seven to zero or we don't agree. Four to three, whatever those numbers are, our community engaged in this process together and that's value. That is absolute value. And again, regardless of how the votes come out and how you feel about this issue. I'm just proud that we live in this community and we can have this discussion in the face. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Levin. Um, for everybody's comments and uh. Questions that they had. Uh, first of all, I do wanna thank the citizens of Mankato. You are right, um. Mike, uh, and everyone that had mentioned that this is a community that is unbelievable. All the emails, the texts, uh, everything that we all received, uh. We didn't have to read any books or watch TV. We could just go on our iPads and, and uh, listen to the comments, which um, truly were appreciated by all. Um, and also for the staff that has uh, redid and redid this ordinance. I know they worked very hard. Um, I know council members and myself have called and talked to them and they were very um. Very cautious and they were, they took um, in consideration everything that each council member had said to them. And they refined it to um, to an ordinance that could be acceptable by all, even the ones that are opposing it. Yeah, it, it's not, um, it wasn't made to um, hurt people. I'm a business owner and I can. When I saw this after they redid it and, and worked with it, I felt more comfortable um, that we were not being pinpointed or being um. Poi- picked out, you know, if somebody should come and not be wearing this um, a mask. So thank you to everyone um, that responded to all the council member, to all the staff, to every community member that um. Voiced their opinions for and against. All of it was appreciated and uh, this is what makes Mankato what it is. So having said that, um, if there are no other comments or questions from. The council members, I am going to open it for a public hearing. Do I hear any comments or questions or we are good?
Ma- no, Madam Mayor, you do have to have a motion on the floor.
I, I apologize. You are correct. Um, we do have to make a motion and uh. I know maybe I'm gonna be out of place, uh, so you can tell me, Mr. Henderson, if I am. But the age limit is what I would like to, um, hopefully one of the council members will up the age limit for children. Do I have a motion for the ordinance in front of us?
I will make a motion that we adapt uh, under the emergency section two point one five. A ordinance regarding mandatory face coverings when in indoor uh, public accommodations.
Do I have a second?
I second. A second with an amendment?
And can you please tell us what the amendment is?
Um, I would like to amend the age limit to twelve. I've done a lot of talking with families. I'm the one here that has small children. I have a three-year-old. There's zero chance in public places that kid can keep the mask on. I have two other children. My kids are not old enough to stay home. They can't be by themselves. They can't babysit their siblings. Twelve is an age where you are old enough to stay home. You are old enough not to go to the store if. One parent needs to take you there. So I would request that. Because of those reasons, to make this a real common sense ordinance, that we would change the age to twelve.
Uh, ma- uh, uh, Madam Mayor, uh, the maker of the motion would have to accept that amendment.
Yes, yes.
I, I accept that as um, not, I'm not sure if files under Robert's rules of. A, a friendly amendment, but it's a reasonable amendment and it's certainly understandable and that's acceptable with me.
All right, thank you, House Member Foreman. So we do have a motion in a second. Now I'm going to open it for a public hearing. Um, Ms. Elms, will you help me with the participation?
Certainly, and I, I just think it's important for, maybe Renee can point out that we did have an individual sign up in advance. And we would go through that first, that list of people on at the end, as you described at the beginning. Then you could still, um, if there are others who wish to raise their hand, go to that.
Uh, Deputy City Manager Elms, I would also suggest, as you read off the name, you read who's on deck. So that person is prepared to raise their hand.
And Renee Kapitsky, our city clerk, will um, be doing that. Um, and so in any individuals who did sign up in advance. Um, if you are on, um, and you're able to make sure that your name and your screen name here matches. Um, what you had turned in and we would um. Likely, if we do not see your name clearly present, we may skip you. We may call your name and skip you if we don't see you and then come back to you at the end. Um, if you end up on there and, and you clearly know you're, you're on deck. Um, you can also use the raise hand function um, in your webinar controls. Or in Windows, you can use Alt plus Y on your keyboard or Option plus Y on a Mac. Um, for that. Um, so with that, I would turn it over to Renee.
And with that, since we do have two hands up, I know Jean is signed up. Casey, I do not have listed, I don't believe.
Renee, because you, Renee, because you have their information, I do not need to ask them for phone numbers or anything, correct?
No, you do not. So first on deck is Laura Peterson, if she's present. And on deck actually is Linda Good. So Laura Peterson would be brought in at this point if she is on.
I do not see that name.
I do not either. In that case, we go to Linda Good. With Craig Manthe being on deck.
Linda Good, are you up?
And once someone comes in, you will need to unmute yourself?
I am here.
Please, Linda, if you can give us your comment. Please, Linda, if you can give us your comments.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to voice the concerns of a group of twenty seniors who are members of a writing group. We are from Mankato or the greater Mankato area. All of us shop and obtain services in Mankato. Our ages span from sixty to ninety years of age, so all of us are at risk. Quarantine fatigue has set in. Some businesses reopened, and people want to believe that the COVID danger has passed. We have observed that precautionary behaviors have become more lax since the reopening. We see more maskless people when we are shopping in Mankato. Since reopening, some businesses have had to take a step backward and close again, thus making the public question the safety of returning as consumers. We seniors are more timid about going out in public when safety precautions are not in place and COVID cases are on the increase. As seniors, we will only shop and seek services from businesses in which we feel safe. That means that we will avoid businesses where masks are not worn by employees and patrons. Precautions like wearing masks and physical distancing are effective ways of reducing risk and build our confidence in returning to public places. Since there are some who refuse to wear a mask, even though it is a public health and safety issue, there needs to be governmental direction. Our constitution guarantees us the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Life is the first and primary right. Because you are leaders in our community, you are responsible for our safety. We urge you to enact an emergency mask ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And now we move on to Craig.
Correct. With Ted Arness on deck.
Craig, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
Please.
Uh, good afternoon, or evening, I should say. I guess my recommendation is not about if people should or shouldn't wear masks. I don't think that that's what this is about. This is about if there should be an ordinance forcing people to wear masks. And on that account, I don't believe that they should be forced to. Every place I've been going, I see businesses, all of their staffs are wearing masks, which is great. And if that's how the business wants to handle it, that is awesome. I mean, that's their prerogative. It's their business. It's their way. But I feel that people should be able to make that judgment call, and we shouldn't be forcing people with ordinances and other things. I do like to say that I did like to, to hear with the ordinance about raising the age because it can be extremely difficult with small children, trying to control them just without having to deal with a mask covering. I mean, just running away and things like that in stores. So thank you very much for that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Craig. We appreciate that. I believe Ted is next.
And I do not see an individual with the name Ted or the last name that's listed.
I did earlier. He maybe is off there now. Okay, so if that's the case, it's Jean Sharf, and hopefully I'm pronouncing that right. With Sean Andrews on deck.
Hi, this is Jimmy Sharp.
Yes, please, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, thank you. My husband and I are opposed to this proposed ordinance. The CDC encourages the cloth face masks, but also admits such face masks offer little protection from the germs of others with only medical-grade face masks offering the appropriate protection, which the CDC also recommends not be purchased for anyone but personnel due to the continued shortages. We also feel that people that wear masks are touching their faces more than ever before. Just take a moment to watch this activity. It's bound to spread and be even more of a conduit than with more nasty germs than even COVID. Face masks are not fitting properly. They are hot. People move them, remove them to speak to you, or place them on their neck, or forehead, or in their pockets, or hang them from their car mirrors. Facial rashes are developing that people now need to seek medical help to cure. As some others have already said, we have the right to freedom as American citizens. We have a responsibility to act in good faith towards others, making sure we practice good hygiene at all times, which includes washing hands, covering coughs and sneezes, and staying home when not feeling well. People may choose to wear masks as they wish, but should not be required to do so. This goes against our constitutional freedoms. We may choose to wear plastic gloves in public places, but we should not be required to do that activity either, and I know that's not on the docket for today. It's another thought process. The state of Minnesota has not required that we all wear face masks in public places, and we question why the city of Mankato would do the same or would do so at this point in time. If the council elects to effectuate this ordinance, we firmly believe the commercial businesses in the city of Mankato will cover greatly, more than they already have. Many businesses are not reopening. You can simply see that by even taking a walk through the River Hills Mall and taking note of how many storefronts are now empty. Further, the businesses should not be expected to lease the ordinance, which the city manager hence has, has explained will not happen.
I want to point out that the ordinance has passed, just who you're aware.
I'm sorry.
To keep on track, we, yeah.
Certainly. I'll just say that until this ordinance, if it's passed, is, is listed, we will not shop in Mankato. We will go elsewhere to, you know, find what we need. And I appreciate the time that the city council has provided and the opportunity to voice our comments.
Thank you, Jean. Thank you very much. I believe Sean is next.
With John Workman on deck.
I see Sean on, on the thing, but I do not, are you there, Sean?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Please, please give us your comments.
So I'm a business owner in Mankato. I've been asked by four, five other families to represent them. We range from thirty-nine to sixty-five, and we are all opposed to this ordinance. I'm not opposed to masks themselves. I wear them when I'm in tight quarters, such as Aldi's and other situations like that where I cannot maintain social distance. But I would also like to say they're not doing as much as you think they are to keep people safe. They're not as effective as people think they are, and I think that's going to give people a lot of false sense of security and have them not do other things that they should be that are more effective, such as social distancing and washing their hands. So they're not as effective as, as you think they are. And then also, I would like to say that although cases are spiking in the area, our hospitalizations still remain stable. Our death rates are decreasing in this state, and they're not even increasing in hotspots such as Texas or Arizona. So I think that this is not the time to enact this ordinance. We saw this with the state homeowners. People got fatigued after a matter of weeks. I think that this is better placed if there is an outbreak and the hospitals locally do get overwhelmed. Let's save it for that time instead of now when it's not really needed and people are going to get burned out from wearing these face masks. And the other thing I'd like to say is, is that I still haven't seen real, any real comments about people who medically cannot wear face masks, whether they have heart problems, breathing problems, sensory issues, how are they going to be protected from plying questions? And also even bullying, because there's a lot of animosity on either side towards the other people. That has not been adequately addressed, because there is reasons not to wear a mask, and they're not simply because somebody's selfish or doesn't care about their fellow man.
That'd be time.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate your comments. Now move on to John Workman.
Correct, with Carrie Lynn on deck.
John, please. He was on.
I'm here.
You are now.
Oh, you are. Okay. Please, John.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the council for allowing the public to weigh in on this important public health matter. As you all know, there's growing scientific evidence that masks help prevent spread, spreading COVID nineteen. The proposed, the proposed ordinance is not government overreach, is well within the role of government to protect the public. Voting against this ordinance is a vote for a future lockdown and a long pandemic. Since the pandemic began, we've all had to make difficult sacrifices to combat spread of COVID nineteen. Many of us have been wearing masks since the CDC made the recommendation in May. It would be unfortunate for progress to be lost because of this information. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Appreciate. Now Carrie Lynn?
Correct, with James Furness on deck. Hopefully I'm saying that right.
I do not see Carrie Lynn listed in the names.
Okay. Shall we move on then to, and if she comes on, we can call her later on?
So then we're at James.
Okay. James, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Please, your comments?
Okay, yes. My main thing, I'm, I'm opposed to this. Now, the state of Wisconsin, they've been open since May fourteenth, and they've got a population of five point eight million, and Minnesota here, we've got five point six million. They've been completely open, all their businesses. Everything is open in Wisconsin, and they've got just about the same numbers as us right now. I just, I, I don't see why, why we're even shut down and why businesses aren't allowed to just do their thing, and we'll worry about it when the hospitals start to fill up. Instead of right now, I mean, the cases were at, you know, nine hundred or so daily, I don't know, a few weeks ago, and now we decide to do it when they're on the downturn at like four hundred. It just, it provides, it provides a false sense of security. People aren't gonna, you know, abide by, by their social distancing as much because the mask will give them a sense of, of false security. And, you know, I just, it, it doesn't make any sense that we're getting this forced onto us, you know, and especially for the business owners. They're the ones that really should be coming out and speaking like the last guy was and, and how if they're opposed to it, because they're the ones it's going to hurt. And then not only that, but how does our law enforcement feel about, about enforcing this? They're going to make, you know, normal people that are otherwise law-abiding, they're going to potentially fine them, and if they don't pay those fines, what, put them in jail after that? I mean, that seems pretty harsh to me. I'm, I'm definitely opposed to it. And the other person I'd like to get input from is, is the attorney, the prosecuting attorney, who's going to have to deal with these cases and, and take up all this court time to deal with this as well. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Appreciate it. Now Carla Gordon?
With Mary Ann Brendan on deck.
Carla?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, please.
My name is Carla Gordon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight at the public meeting. I am a registered nurse. My background is emergency nursing, and currently I'm working in home healthcare. My patients range from very young children, and my oldest client is ninety-two years old. My view on this issue tonight is to please vote yes to the ordinance for the mandated masks. We have tried, as a community, wearing masks in public places and have seen those who do not wish to make, to wear the masks by their own choosing, and it isn't working. We currently see a rise in the number of COVID cases now in Mankato. Today it showed Blue Earth County was at four seventy-nine and Niklet County one sixty-nine. Why not try something different that may indeed help in decreasing these COVID cases by being proactive and voting yes? If we vote yes, we can monitor the data and see if the COVID cases indeed decrease. I really believe that now is the time to be proactive for this ordinance. No one is immune to COVID. It is a pandemic, and it's hitting healthy people, young and old. And I trust that the city council will evaluate all this information with an open heart and make a good decision tonight, and I really hope that you will be proactive and vote for this emergency ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Appreciate it. Now we move on to Mary Ann Brendan.
With Grant Minard on deck.
Mary Ann?
Yes, I'm here.
Please.
My name is Mary Ann Brendan. I am a relative newcomer to the Mankato community. I moved here last fall. I'm a retired college professor, and taught thirty-seven years in liberal arts colleges with a focus on social policy. We have heard a lot about vulnerable elders in our community, and I strongly endorse the articulate comments of the first speaker and her message to, to pass this ordinance and, and adopt a mask ordinance for Mankato. But I also want to talk about a group that we haven't heard a lot about, and that's children. Schools were closed last spring early, and there's a huge threat that that will happen again in September, that schools will not open on time. This is extremely deleterious, has a very deleterious effect on our children, not only on their intellectual development, but also their social and emotional development. I'm very concerned about the spike that we're presently experiencing here in our area, and if that spike continues, I think we run a huge risk of not being able to safely open schools for children. And that would have, that is a very, very stressful thing, not only for them, for their parents. And I think it's important for us to recognize the very, very important link between the economy and schools. Until schools are open and children are able to safely return to schools, parents have, are faced with challenges relating to childcare. So until we can open schools, we cannot successfully, fully open the economy, and I think it's very important to take a look at the link between those two. The other thing I want to mention, which I have not heard, is that with summer months and vacations being in full force, there's a lot of people moving around the state and across state borders. We're having a lot of people visit Mankato and people from Mankato going elsewhere. And I think it's in the best interest of the community to keep the community safe by using, by having a mask ordinance, and that the evidence is very compelling in support of that. Thank you very, very much for your work and for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mary Ann. We now have Grant Minard.
With Matt Wrightmeyer on deck.
Grant?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. Please.
Hi, thanks for having me. So I work, I'm a public-facing worker. I'm required by the executive order to wear a mask to protect my customers, which is right. I think that's the right thing to do, but my customers are not required to, to, to protect me in that same way. And I, there's been all this talk since this started about celebrating essential workers and thanking them for what they're doing, but I think if we're not willing to do the absolute bare minimum to protect them as they do that essential work, then that was all hollow, all of that celebration, and I think it says a lot about us. If, if we aren't willing to do that for them, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Now we have Matt Wrightmeyer.
Followed by Alan Schmidt.
Matt?
There you go. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, please.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, councilors, neighbors, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. As a working member of the COVID Action Response Team for Gustavus Adolphus College, I have already spent weeks evaluating the risk and response variables affecting our ability to return to in-person classes in the fall. It's a long process, lots of information from national and international sources, and with respect to Dr. And with respect to Dr. Osterholm, uh, the 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 mask is to protect other people and the air coming out of our faces, not the stuff coming in. Uh, we need to understand that this is still a developing situation. It is still a pandemic with no cure and no vaccine. Dr. Fauci just told us today that we are knee deep in the first wave of this pandemic. It is unprecedented, and stopping it will take unprecedented measures. The need for broader-based testing of asymptomatic people is paramount, and until those tests are in place everywhere, we are in desperate need of proactive protection. Studies are being reported with more evidence that this airborne virus will continue to spread anywhere and everywhere there's prolonged exposure. It's gonna be likely more than ten feet even, especially when the virus is exhaled through laughing, coughing, yelling, singing, athletic respiration, all those things. We need proactive protection. My colleagues at MSU in Bethany will likely agree that our ability to conduct classes and normal campus functions this fall hinges on our ability to control community exposure risks now. Thousands of new cases are being reported daily in the U.S. Let's keep those numbers down as small as possible in southern Minnesota. Rochester has already implemented mandatory mask use. We can and should do the same. Being proactive is simple. Wear masks, wash your hands, stay six feet away from each other. Now let's make it mandatory. If we reach ninety-five percent compliance, a study suggests we may save the lives of over thirty thousand people. Let's do it for them because the them just might be us.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. Alan Schmidt?
Followed by Shane Schmidt?
And I do not see an Alan Schmidt um, signed up, and I do want to let people know if you do have your hand raised that um, and you aren't listed, there may be time at the end, or if we somehow missed you, we can go through that process. So again, I do not see an Alan Schmidt. I don't know if you see.
I don't either. Do you, do we see a Shane?
Shane, I believe I did see.
They're static, so I'm not sure if they're trying to.
Can you hear me?
They're going on speakers?
Do you?
Shane? Do we have Shane? Go ahead.
We lost him. Until he gets back on, we could go with Marty Meyer, Dad?
Please. Marty, are you on?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I think we should let, to let individual businesses decide on mask use can divide our community. What if all of your competitors require or don't require face coverings? Can you, you really decide what is best for your customers? That becomes competitive. Wearing a face mask is one concrete way of saying we care during a scary time. Yes, it's insurance in case we are symptom-free carriers. It provides little protection from those who do not wear masks and refuse to stay six feet away from us. If gyms are exempt while working out, please mandate mandate that they sanitize all equipment before they leave and wear masks coming in and out of the door. Arnold Schwarzenegger won't go to his gym until they get got masks. Those who don't speak English as a first language, if you know people, explain to them about the face coverings. Some of them don't understand that. Hey, if you don't have a mask, take a bandana or a towel. Hide it behind you. Look like a bandit. A bandit who is not stealing anyone's health, who is allowing schools to reopen sooner, and who cares about our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Now, do we have Michael Lemmon?
Followed by Joe Gurkey?
I, Michael?
I do not see a Michael, I see a Mike with a hand raised, and we could make an assumption and have them state their name. Or we've.
I I think we just continue going straight down, um, Allison, and then that way with the hand raised, um, we can go back to them.
Are we on Joe Gurkey then?
I believe so. Joe?
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this issue uh, with regards to the emergency ordinance being proposed. Uh, to require the face coverings, I would like to state my opposition towards the proposal. Um, I have several reasons that I'm leaning towards opposing the ordinance versus being for it, but my main opposition is um, is about the method being proposed to implement the mask wearing. I believe that an emergency ordinance or an executive order approach is not the best method to bring about mask wearing, since it takes away people's and businesses' choices uh, to do what is best for them and their individual situation. I believe that a better method would be to, or a better method would be more easily and would be more easily accepted by the majority of the public, especially since this is a psychological issue, would be to let businesses themselves decide if they want to require the mask wearing in their facilities and then provide support uh, to enforce those choices that the businesses have made. Uh, support could come by a way of extra law enforcement or penalties, such as the ones that were listed in section, section seven of the proposed ordinance. Uh, we could provide them help with obtaining cleaning supplies or masks. We could provide COVID prevention education, et cetera. I believe that this method would still provoke, allow the public to have a say in in how they choose to do business. It would allow businesses to still have a say in how they choose to run their businesses, and it would allow the city to still support the community effort efforts against COVID-19. Um, and I believe that what the city would do would be the same either way if we have the ordinance or we don't have the ordinance. We could still provide that same support. So ultimately, I believe that people are extremely capable of doing the right things for their situation. I believe they're capable of adapting to unique situations and that they are capable of taking care of themselves on their own without having to be mandated to do so, and this would include the current situation involving COVID-19. So uh, thank you again for the opportunity to speak and thanks for your time.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Now we move on to Sherri Crocker.
And I did just want to point out that Shane Schmidt is back and would be on deck.
Okay.
Uh, this is Sherri Crocker. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, Sherri. Go ahead, please.
Hi, uh, my name's Sherri Crocker, and um, I am a registered nurse. I've been a nurse for many years, ten years in critical care, and the additional fifteen have been in occupational um, health. I'm currently uh, completing my master's of public health in um, in occupational health. So um, I would take uh, note that Dr. Osterholm would probably not be happy that his name is being used in this context because Dr. Oster, how Dr. Osterholm feels is we need to social distance. He still believes that masking is important. And in fact, his most recent that I could find, June eighteenth, um, our um, interview, he says, I wear a mask, and I recommend others wear a mask as well. So uh, I think he's on the same sheet of music as the rest of us as far as the necessity um, for masking. I would also say that I am with Grant in that, um, you know, I am looking to support both physically and financially the hospitality workers. Um, hospitality workers are required, if they are COVID positive, to be out for ten days on quarantine. They are also required to stay home for fourteen days if they've actually had an exposure. And I don't think this is acceptable, not for the employees and not for the owners of these businesses, because that alone could uh, you know, have businesses shutting down. So I do not believe this is a civic civic civil liberties issue. This is a public health issue and quite frankly, an unprecedented public health crisis, and I think we have to act accordingly. Um, you know, one of the interesting things, uh, and my time is up, so I will just say that, and I want to say that I want to thank the city council folk for really looking into this and putting so much effort into um, addressing this issue, but we we really need to do it to keep our businesses open.
Thank you, Sherri. Appreciate that. Now, um, we're gonna go to Sean Andrew. Is that correct, the last name?
Shane Schmidt.
Shane Schmidt, okay, I apologize. Shane, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, please.
Okay, okay. I was gonna start by stating a few facts, but I don't know what to believe anymore or who to believe anymore.
Shane, do you have your speaker on by chance for getting an echo?
Is that better?
Yes, sorry. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry about that. So yeah, I was gonna start by stating a few facts, but I don't know who or what to believe anymore. So I'm just gonna say how I feel. I think if you work with the elderly or someone with an underlying condition, you should wear a mask. But when when it comes to business owners, I believe we should leave that up to them. If a business owner wants their staff and customers to wear masks, then they should have to wear a mask to enter that business. If an owner wants it to be optional, they should have the right as well. No one is forcing anyone into these establishments, and I'm pretty sure no one is gonna turn someone away if they choose to wear a mask. And I think comparing this emergency ordinance to the smoking ban is just ridiculous. But I'm just, I'm glad we're all talking about it, and uh, I'm glad we're we're talking about something. I think with everything that's going on with the shooting and deaths and all of a sudden alarming rate, and we're just sitting here talking about a mask, I think there's a lot more important things that we can be talking about, but I guess I just wanted to voice my opinion, and I just want people to think about that.
Thank you, Shane.
Thanks for your time.
You bet. Thank you very much. Now we're gonna move on to Tim Brimmer. Am I correct?
Um, yes, I do not see a Tim Brimmer listed.
I would note that Carrie Lynn is now on as well, and that's somebody that we went past already.
Should we go to her right now then, please?
Carrie?
Carrie, can you hear us? Carrie, you're on mute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you for allowing me to, the time to uh, speak with you here just briefly. Um, I I do believe that the mask ordinance should be mandated uh, for a very simple reason. Um, I I've heard a lot of discussions about against the map, the the mask, but there are three sources. And and the difficult decision that the city council faces is that this is a decision not based on popular opinion or what the public thinks. The decision that you're gonna make is to intervene in a public health crisis. And there should be only three sources of information that you turn to to base your decision on, and that's what the science is telling us. The World Health Organization, the Center for Disease Control, and the Mayo Clinic is telling us, mask up, wash your hands, don't touch your face, very simple instructions. I, and and my question to those who oppose the idea of wearing a mask under the pretense that somehow it infringes on your your personal freedom i- is is delusional. You have no basis for that thought. It's very simple. I I'm a sixty-eight-year-old disabled Vietnam-era veteran. The only people that frighten me i- is not some thug walking down the street because I can defend myself with a thug on the street. I can't defend myself from people walking around Target with a, not wearing a mask. I'm defenseless. And we have to accept the responsibility for what comes out of our mouth, whether we think we're sick or not. You know, you wear a mask to protect others. I- it's that simple. And and the decision is not one based on popularity, but based on how does the city of Mankato respond to a pande- pandemic, public health crisis?
Thank you, Carrie. We appreciate that. Your time is up, but I think we got what you're saying. We appreciate it. Thank you.
And Fred, Nick Zelke?
Nick?
With Dar Bosberg on deck?
Nick, you are. Go right ahead. Go right ahead, Nick. We see that your hand is raised?
You may be having a difficulty either with your speaker or um, we're not hearing anything, but you are unmuted. Uh, maybe we can come back to Nick?
Okay. Then we will move on to Dar Bosberg?
With Kevin Bradley on deck?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Dar, please.
Okay, I'm I'm a business owner in Mankato, and I feel that I should be making the decision as to if I require them of my employees and or my clients. My parents also own a business in Mankato, and they feel exactly the same way I do. I also should be allowed to make that decision when I go out in public. If a business requires them, I can choose to go to that business, or I can choose to go elsewhere or stay home. If those that are on the city council that own businesses are adamant that they should be required, I question them if they require them right now. Um, I do know that this art, if this ordinance passes, my tenant that is in my office said she would move out and rent elsewhere. Masks, other than the N ninety-five masks, when fitted properly, have not been proven to prevent viruses, and I will, I was one of the ones who sent you Dr. Osterholm's video. This ordinance comes at a time when the death rate is declining. Yes, there are many more cases, but that is mainly because there are more people being tested. Can we also trust the numbers as to how many really are infected? Or are they counting everything that has been tested positive as a case? Um, deaths are quite a, down quite a bit, so that should be something that we should consider. Um, wearing masks will give those that believe they work a false sense of security. This could cause them to not be careful in touching their mask and possibly washing their hands, hands less frequently. Why aren't we talking about improving one's immune system instead of doing something that can hurt the immune system? If the city wants to take that on, I will volunteer to help. There are many things that can help to boost one's immune system, but no one seems to be allowed or want to talk about that. Many people think that those that believe like me are being careless and don't care about others. That could be further from the truth for me. I have a husband that has severe CLPD and is on disability, and I have parents in their seventies. I'm also a cancer survivor and I have lymph nodes removed, so I am also considered at high risk. I was one of the original members of the Mankato Air Smoke Free Coalition that worked on Mankato, making Mankato smoke free in public places. That ordinance took over five years to pass, and there was so much more proof of the effects of secondhand smoke than there is about the benefit of wearing a mask. There are so many other things to consider. How are we going to enforce this law? Um, we don't have enough police officers to take those calls. When will this stop? You say sixty days, but what if we have a bad flu season next year? How are you going to deal with those with disability or health conditions? They aren't required to disclose their medical condition, and business owners could face penalties if they question them or ask for proof of their disability. How many people will use it?
We are at two minutes. Sorry to interrupt.
So thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you, Dar. Appreciate that. We are moving on to Kevin Bradley.
And Kevin, followed by Amber Maslowski, and we do have Nick Solke that we will try again, following.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Kevin. Please.
Thank you. Uh, I am a certified critical incident stress management counselor. A critical incident is defined as one that affects the entire community, such as this pandemic. I am also an ordained chaplain specializing in mental health and especially PTSD. Advocates of mandatory masks think they will keep people safe. The same argument was made about lockdowns, but every model about COVID deaths has been wrong. More damage has arguably been caused by the response to COVID than by COVID itself. Domestic abuse has risen twenty-five percent just in Minnesota, as victims are trapped in their homes with abusers. Calls to a federal crisis hotline increased three hundred and thirty-eight percent when the lockdown started. More startling, there was an increase of almost nine hundred percent to that hotline call over the same period of just a year ago. According to the Centers for Disease Control, the percentage of deaths, not cases, but deaths from COVID has now dropped eleven consecutive weeks. In the last two weeks alone, it dropped by half from nine percent to just four point five percent, even while lockdown restrictions are being relaxed, and some areas are reporting an increase in positive cases, and that decrease has all been achieved without a mask mandate. The media has been focusing on the spike in cases, but that spike can largely be attributed to increased testing and does not reflect an increase in fatalities. Several council members have mentioned Dr. Michael Osterholm. One mentioned an earlier video. I encourage everyone to listen to his podcast of June third. In that podcast, In that podcast, he notes that the CDC has created confusion by having conflicting, conflicting advice on their website. He also provides further explanation as to why cough masks, cloth masks are actually not effective in protecting others. He does wear one himself, but not because they are effective, rather because of the social expectation. Dr. Osterholm says the focus should be on physical distancing, not on cloth masks. From my perspective, a mask mandate perpetuates a community-wide fear that is not based on facts. Governor Walz has been considering a statewide mandate-
That would be time, sorry to interrupt.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Kevin.
I think we're going to Nick Zelke, and then I think Tim Bremer is out there now as well.
Okay. Nick, you're on mute, can you unmute? There you go. Nick? Nick, we see your hand up, and you are unmuted.
We are hearing nothing.
Maybe go to Tim Bremer and we'll-
Please, please. Tim, yes, let's go on to Tim, and then we'll come back to Nick.
Hi, uh, you can hear me?
Yes, Tim, we can hear you, please.
Hi, alright, good evening, thanks for the opportunity to speak, uh. I just wanna say I can understand the concern over the COVID fears. The truth is, through rigged numbers and sensationalism by the media, fear is what's being pushed. My mom's family is large, my dad's family is huge, my in-laws are massive. Altogether, through family and friends, we know close to a thousand people, if not more. We are spread across this nation, we know no one who has died. The few we know who they say have had it, around three days or less. That's not a pandemic. When I know more people who committed suicide, there's something wrong here. Only thing I see happening that's hurting me and my community is the response. Businesses that make a city unique are shut down while corporate stays open. The middle class is being destroyed, Wall Street goes up and down. So much if you're not a billionaire, you being pinched. Farmers are being asked to destroy crops, dump milk, et cetera, 'cause restaurants and schools closed. I can go on and on, but today, faced with a mandate that for those who refuse, will be denied freedoms, liberties, and the pursuit of happiness. This is oppressive with threats of charges, fines, and police harassment. We should never give up our freedoms out of fear and a theory that is being disproved daily. There are numerous doctors and scientists, including our Dr. Scott Jensen, Senator Minnesota, who exposed the fraudulent numbers by taking out stats from heart attacks and strokes, et cetera, and placing them as a COVID without hu- hundred percent certainty. I suggest other doctors, such as Dr. Andrew Kaufman, who exposes the theories in, uh, this COVID. Dr. Kelly Victory, Dr. Shen Penny, and so many more, who expose this lie. You su- the masks are ineffective, as said by your surgeon. They're not designed to stop a virus, and I challenge anybody with the accuracy of anything microscopic. All you are is depriving yourself of oxygen by breathing in carbon dioxide. If you don't think so, go for a jog on the heat and see if you ain't feeling effects, which are also known for brain damage, immune deficiencies.
Tim?
You're getting dumber, weaker, the more prone to get sick. You are betraying America.
Is there any way, Tim?
Yeah.
We have to have time for other people to talk, we appreciate what you said. We thank you so very much for your input.
But a vote for is a betrayal of America. You are violating, you're being oppressive.
Alright, thank you, let's move on now to, let's move on now to, I believe it's Amber. Amber, you are on mute, can you unmute, please? Amber, you are, uh, on mute, can you unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you now.
Hi, everyone, my name is Amber Maslowski, I'm twenty-eight years old and a current resident here in Mankato, Minnesota. Thank you for letting me speak today. Um, this past week, I was actually admitted into the ER on three separate occasions. Due to one of my symptoms, I was treated as a potential COVID patient until my results came back, which ended up being negative, thankfully. There was a moment during my time there where my IV dislodged, and I needed more immediate assistance. However, with the volume of potential COVID cases, it took nurses a much longer time to reach me. It took them twenty minutes to reach me, during which time I was in severe pain. They have to gear up over and over between pacing, patients, or risk spreading it to new patients. I then realized I was just affected by COVID, although not in a large sense, but in a minute comparison. At some point, COVID will affect you, it will reach you, and it will get you, maybe not in the disease itself. But don't just wait, wear. Gear up like the nurses, doctors, first responders at the face of this. Gear up like the workers and your fellow neighbors. Our hospital, all hospitals, are not, or do not have that capacity, manpower, supplies, to take on a mass influx of COVID patients. As my experience showed, hospitals are currently and have been overwhelmed. Based on John Hopkins University's website, regarding Blue Earth County, has only a hundred and sixty-seven number of staff beds, two hundred and seventy-two number of licensed beds, twenty-nine number of ICU beds. You can look at these, um, references or what they mean later on. Sixty-six thousand total population. A friend mentioned to me that approximately twenty-five percent of shoppers wear masks at Target. Can you risk seventy-five percent? I agree with the amendment of twelve years of age minimum. Sometimes you have to put in place rules and keep people safe whether they like it or not, thank you.
Thank you, Amber, thank you, Amber. We move on now to Jason Manch- Mancheck.
First time, Shokatelli?
Jason?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, please.
Cool. Um, I just wanted to comment, uh, when Governor Walz lifted the stay-at-home lockdown, he gave us very clear instructions to keep up with social distancing and to wear masks in public. It wasn't a government mandate, it wasn't a law. He was asking us to do the right thing and be responsible to control the spread of COVID. On my retail shopping trips, I'm finding crowded stores and a majority of shoppers unmasked. People are not acting responsibly with COVID. So I urge you to pass this ordinance to keep public spaces as safe as practicable. You have the legal power to do this, it isn't government overreach, it's good public health policy in a pandemic. It's the best option on the table to slow the spread and keep us from going back to another lockdown. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jason. Now we move on to Sean Shokatelli, am I saying that correctly? Sean, you're on mute, can you please unmute? Thank you, go right ahead. Sean, you are on mute again. Sean? Sean, we see your hand raised, can you say, can, can you say something so that we can hear if you're coming through?
I don't, I think this is a similar issue, um, from a prior person.
Yes, we can come back.
Their audio is not working.
We can come back to Sean, if anything.
Rachel Hygref?
Yes. Rachel? Rachel, you are on mute, can you unmute, please?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
Okay, I'm gonna start out by saying that I'm opposed to the mask ordinance, and I'm gonna read a Minnesota statue, um, six oh nine dot seven three five on concealing identity. It says, "A person whose identity is concealed by the person in a public place by means of a robe, mask, or other disguise, unless based on religious beliefs or incidental to amusement, entertainment, protection from the weather, or medical treatment, is guilty of a misdemeanor." So I think that kinda contradicts, you know, it's not an enforced law by any means, but it is that. Um, and from the New England Journal of Medicine, um, they say, "Wearing a mask outside healthcare facilities offers little, if any, protection from infection." Public health authorities define a significant exposure to COVID as face-to-face. Um, I just think that if this were really about safety, we would have been wearing a mask three months ago when this all started, not act as a fact. People are improperly wearing a mask, they tend to touch their face more often while wearing a mask, because they are readjusting them constantly, they remove them improperly, and then reuse disposable mask multiple times. If you pass this ordinance, are you going to have hazardous material waste containers around the city for proper disposal? And the amount of waste that this is creating should also be considered for environmental reasons. The severity of cases are decreasing. If this passes, I and many others will choose to shop outside the city, further impacting tax revenue. Let the people make their own health choices, we are all well aware of what is going on. It has after all been over three months, and most importantly, wash your hands.
Alright, thank you, Rachel, appreciate that. Now we move on to Mark Anderson.
I do not, I see a Mark, but not a Mark Anderson, and Mark is quite a common name. And now I don't even see a Mark.
Okay, let's move on then to Kevin Hagerty.
Oh, I do see a Mark, hold on, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Alright, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Mayor Mossad and city council members, thank you for this opportunity to provide input. I've emailed you all, so you're aware I'm opposed to this initiative. But I'd like to briefly re- reiterate that according to the most recent data from the Minnesota Department of Health, hospitalizations, non-ICU and ICU rates are dropping. Death rate from COVID is dropping. The curve has been flattened, so I urge you to reject the proposal under consideration this evening. However, I also ask that as representatives of a regional center, you reach out to community leaders within our area of influence. Reach out to the leadership teams at Minnesota State University, Mankato, and the city of North Mankato. Work cooperatively to formulate complementary or joint public awareness campaigns focused on reducing the spread of the COVID virus within the greater Mankato area. Thank you for your time, consideration, and patience.
Thank you very much. No.
We have Kevin Hagerty, and we do, um, have Nick Zolki and, um, who had attempted, so on, so we can go to him after Kevin.
Okay, Kevin? Kevin, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me now?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
Thank you for the chance to share this information. I'm, I'm a, a local resident, I've been here for twenty years, I have five children, and a lovely wife, um, and I love Mankato as a community. I'm very disappointed in the direction we've headed in dealing with this endemic. Let me share some facts, there are a hundred and thirty thousand dead plus in America as of today. That's in the last six months. That's more than the US military deaths from the Vietnam, Korean, and Revolutionary Wars combined. And now I'm dead, those people are already gone, and we are just starting. We need to take this virus more seriously as a whole, both from a systemic level and an individual level. Right now, our death rate is at four point five percent. Even if that death rate goes down to one percent, which is low for the, around the world, and trust me, we have failed relative to the rest of the world. That would, we could lead to one and one-half million deaths in the United States. One and a half million deaths, if, if half of our population get it, gets it. That's just half. We're pinned by other countries, we have failed national leadership, so now it's local leaderships to make this decision. And I'm in favor of local leadership, like a lot of folks. And there are three leading health organizations today, just major, Americans Wear Masks, the American Health, Medical, and Nurse Association. And the reason it's necessary is because there's documented instances of asymptomatic death. We can't wait for the number of deaths to climb before we act. In Booing County, a number of cases are spiking. Usually, it takes about, um, fourteen to twenty-one days for people to die with this disease. It overwhelms emergency rooms and, and intensive care units. We do proactive laws in this country like seatbelts, drunk driving, texting and driving, wore shirt, no shoes, no service, et cetera. Because in a responsible society, we tell people that there are limits for their behavior, and city council, that's your job here. You must do that. And I must say, as a citizen, I'm disappointed in those council members that had their vote decided before they heard the citizenry.
Kevin, your time is up. Kevin, Kevin, thank you so much, we appreciate it. Um, your time is up, we wanna make sure that we get everybody on there. Again, thank you. Allison, who was, uh?
We have Nick Zolki that we'll try again, and then, and then Sean, um, is back as well.
Nick, can you hear us?
We, let's, we have to let him back in, one moment.
Okay.
There he goes.
Alright, this time?
Yes, yes.
Alright. Um, I'm a business owner in Mankato, I no longer live there, um, but still have a business there. I guess a couple, I'm, I'm opposed to it, I think every business should be deciding for themselves. I also wanna thank Mr. Deekman for, our dentist, for calling me, um, and speaking with him. I did email some other, um, members of the council, and never heard back anything from them, or a very generic email. Couple questions I have is like, for my business, um, you say it's for a public place, so if I would lock the doors and only let customers in, by appointment only, so they'd be just like the gyms, do they have to wear a mask then? Do I have to wear a mask? Also for Mr. Hentges, he also said in the last meeting that we not have the means for enforcement already for the, the bars and stuff downtown, and how are they gonna expect to have the means for the enforcement of this? Uh, you're already got the police force with bad names on them right now, and I support them, but you're really gonna strain them, and you're really gonna put another bad name on them if you pass this. Um, I for one will shop other, other cities or other states if I have to. We have been doing that already, been trying to spread it around and, and support small businesses, and I will continue to keep doing that if I have to, um, if this is passed. Or if, even if the governor passes a statewide one, I will look out of state. I guess that's what I have to say for today, and, and those couple of questions for Mr. Hentges on, um, the enforcement, and if I would lock my doors and only let people in, um, by appointment only.
Alright, thank you, Nick.
And we do have Sean back, um, who will bring in.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, you can hear me now.
Oh, very good, thank you. Well, good evening, everyone, council members, and so Mankato residents. I am speaking for nine other people, but I won't get into all the names. Um, and a lot of what I have to say has already been said, uh, being one of the last. But as of yesterday, hospitalizations continue to go down and reopen Minnesota. We have five hundred and thirty-seven hospitalizations on June second. And on Ju- July fifth, we went to two hundred and fifty-three, that's in one month. I, I ponder why then is Mankato City Council considering more restrictions and essentially fear, to the point that some on this council are enthusiastic to pass an ordinance that would allow for conveying children, and possibly sending them to juvenile court for not wearing a mask. This to any thoughtful person is ludicrous. It is well established, please check this, that children are not even vectors for passing the virus. And for those who talk about opening schools, they should be using that to open schools. Also, as someone just said, does this ordinance help build trust between the average citizen and law enforcement? Why would you put an officer in this position? Is it a good use of their time and our money? Unfortunately, I'm losing confidence in leadership broadly. It appears to be considering and using valuable time and resources to address non-issues, all while the data clearly shows the healthcare system is being unburdened. Did some on the council forget? Please reflect that the initial goal was to ensure that those who required hospitalization would have it. It appears that Minnesota now has greater than two hundred and fifty extra beds available since last month. And for those so passionate about saving every life, And for those so passionate about saving every life, what was your outcry? When in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, the CDC estimated eighty thousand Americans died. Due to seasonal influenza, eighty thousand. There was a vaccine then. It is worth noting that unfortunately, there is death every year in the United States due to viruses. It is so, and it will be so going forward. If someone is concerned about protecting themselves, it is their choice to stay six feet away and wear a mask or shelter in place. They are not required to engage with someone that does not have a mask.
Okay, Sean, Sean, your time.
Oh, I have one sentence, just one sentence. Creating more obstacles and intentionally pulling at Mankato's current, currently fragile social thread. Is profoundly disturbing and perplexing on many levels. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do, um, Renee, do we have time for, um, any more comments?
Mayor and council, we don't have any other names that were, had been signed up, although we do have. Twelve attendees with their hands raised, and one of those people's name is Mike, and I, it may be Michael LeMans, I, I, it's, it says Mike. Um, so if, um, we could go through that and again, limit to the two minutes or less if that it's not, you don't have to go for the whole two minutes. Um, and just go down the line of those in attendance who had raised their hand, um, if that's council's pleasure.
If we can keep it to under the two minutes, that would be great, but I would like to start with Mike, if you could just tell us if it is the Mike.
I do need to note too that if we do do this, those people that are coming in need to state their name and their address as well. Because they weren't pre-registered.
Alright, so, um.
So we do have Mike in this meeting, and he would need to unmute.
Okay, Mike.
Okay, good evening. This is, uh, Mike Dietrich, not the other Mike.
Okay, like what I'm going to do from anyone that's listening on to me now. If you just tell us if you're opposed or not, because we have quite a bit, uh, quite a few people here. And you're gonna have to give us your name and address, so Mike, please give us your name and address. You can tell us if you're opposed or for it, and maybe just one sentence why.
Okay, um, I'm opposed to it. One thirty-seven Emerson Lane here in Mankato. Um, I'm opposed to the ordinance. Um, I've got a bunch of things here, but I guess the biggest thing is, if you go back to the smoking in the bars, I hated smoking bars. And, uh, but I will defend to my grave a business owner's right to make that decision whether they want to allow it in their business or not. So, that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Next, we have a Tacey. Can you unmute?
Hi, Tacey Schwartz, three sixteen South Fourth Street.
Yes, Tacey.
Um, I want to say I'm for, um, for the proposal, uh, with, uh, Congress or council member. At Tampa's amendment, um, simply because on the MDH website, they do state that children under five. Are at a very low risk, and that's just too much for parents.
It is. Alright, we agree. Thank you, Tacey. Kelly Melbrough.
Yes, thank you. Um, Kelly Melbrough, my address is one zero one Allstrom Road here in Mankato. Um, I am for the ordinance. I think worst case scenario, we're a little bit uncomfortable. Best case scenario, we save some lives.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Then, next we have Vanessa Omar.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, please. Your na- your name and address, please, Vanessa.
Yeah, Anissa Omar, nine one nine Mavis Boulevard, Mankato, Minnesota. Um, I just want to let you guys know that I do support creating a mask ordinance. I'm kind of wary of the punitive measures being utilized to enforce these laws. Um, the criminalization of an illness and transmission has only ever had devastating effects on those most vulnerable to the law. Such as black people, immigrants, and queer and transgender folks. So establishing a fine for not wearing a mask will most definitely disproportionately affect those who are poor. I do hope that you guys reconsider this ordinance, um, and as opposed to criminalizing the mask mandate. We should make masks free, widely available, and encourage public spaces to give them out to people who do not have access to it.
Thank you, Vanessa. Appreciate that. Next will be Phillip Shealy.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, so just being brief about it, also we're all limiting.
Excuse me, can you give your address, please?
Oh, yes, two, it's, uh, Lake Crystal, two oh one South Lincoln Street. But, am I good?
Yes.
Alright, so yeah, I, I actually work in a business there. I, real briefly, I know a lot of people there would be against it. Um, so I don't think it'd be good for our business, and I just think it's the business's choice and the people's choice. And not for someone else to make, so that's kind of sums it up, obviously, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is Reed Nelson. Can you give us your name and address?
And unmute.
And unmute, please, Reed.
Can, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yes, um, I live at five two one Emerson Lane in Saint Peter. Um, and I am opposed to the ordinance. I think this is a case of textbook government overreach, and I do believe that masks. Um, are a case of personal choice. And anyone who chooses to wear a mask, I think that's great. I think you're doing a good job of protecting yourself. But if you don't wear a mask, I believe that should be your choice.
Thank you, Reed. Appreciate that. Nate Clark, next, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So, my name is Nate Clark, one oh eight Central Court, Mankato, Minnesota. Five six zero one, and. Um, one of the things that my biggest concern is that. Is that we should pass the city law of face mask, because of the fact that I'm a central worker. I work at Hilltop Highway. And I see my customers walking in, about fifty percent of our customers are not wearing masks. And, and it's affecting me. I'm protecting them from wearing my mask, but they're not wearing masks, so if they're coughing on me, there's a good chance that I could get it. And I don't want that.
Alright, thank you, Nate. Anne Hagerty, next. I did, I have to stop, go ahead.
I just wanted to quickly note that since we started this, the list keeps increasing or doesn't go down because people keep raising their hands. So I don't know how you guys want to handle that, but just.
I'm watching it, and I'm going to stop at Megan, because after that, people started putting their hands up. So we, we have about four, five more people. Ann is next. Did Ann take her hand down?
Ann needs to unmute. Ann, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. I submitted a form this morning. I'm not sure it went through, but I'm speaking as a mom. I'm speaking, um, as a principal at an elementary school.
Can you please share your address? I'm sorry.
My address is five six two eight eight Island Road, and I live in Mankato. And I'm speaking as a mom, and I'm speaking as a community member, and I'm speaking as a principal at an elementary school. And I think that one person tonight spoke to this a little bit, but there is great risk in not being able to go back to school. Everything from learning loss to child nutrition, to, um, neglect, to abuse, to things that are not being reported. And there's research, um, out there about the fact that communities absolutely. And that's where this falls on the city council. If not the city council, the governor, somebody. Um, and I, I am disappointed also in the fact that it feels as though some people have made up their mind, and that's uber frustrating, but. Communities absolutely have to take appropriate health precautions, including wearing masks to boost efforts. To resume regular classes. It's that simple. We need the help of the community. And if we want to get them back to school, and we need to, I have five of them. We absolutely need to get them back to school. We have to, as a community, step up and do this very important stuff.
Thank you. I'm gonna have to stop you because we need to, we need to have others that we want to get to. But, thank you so much. Jody Mansfield.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please.
My name is Jody Mansfield. My address is three hundred Homestead Road here in Mankato. I didn't sign up as I believed I was still going to be out of town on vacation, but I did get back in time. Um, we were gone over the fourth, so, um, I am opposed to the mask ordinance. Um, many of the things I would have wanted to say have already been stated, so I will not reiterate that. But I do believe there's a portion of the population that we are not considering. Um, I have a very good friend who was raped repeatedly as a child by her, um, by a family member. That's all I will say. Um, and he put his hand over her mouth when that, ever that would happen, and wearing a mask brings that memory back. Every single time. So she's avoided places where she has to wear them, and, um, I just think there are people who have situations like that who. Wouldn't fall under any standard, um, reason, medical reason for not wearing masks, and we. Are not considering that, and.
Thank you, Jody.
I would appreciate that.
Thank you for sharing that. Thank you. Margot? You're on mute? Go ahead.
Margot Drew Shell, three twelve West Seventh. Many other people, I'm, I'm in favor of the ordinance. Many other people have said the things that I would like to say. However, I'd like to add that I work at MSU advising, uh, students. And we are so eager to try to bring our students back, and we are working day and night at MSU. To follow guidelines, to ask everyone on campus to be masked and to have six foot distance. But if the city of Mankato chooses not to ask everyone to mask and to care about the common good. Chances are that we will continue to escalate as we did when the bars opened and there were numerous cases. And I'm concerned that our students, when they hear that we're gonna be all online, if that decision has to be made. If things are still bad on August first, that many students will not come. The economic impact as well as the social impact will be significant.
Thank you, Margot. Appreciate that. Tammy? Tammy? Tammy, can you unmute, please? Tammy? There must be something wrong with the audio.
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to Megan Dell, and Megan will be our last one. Megan? Is this Megan?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Yes, please, go right in.
My name is Megan Dell. My address is five eight four oh seven, two hundred and twenty-seventh Street in Mankato. I'm a Mankato business owner, and I'm speaking for six other Mankato businesses. Uh, my shop specifically has been state, the state is requiring our customers to wear masks. Which has alleviated a huge burden on our shop. And I feel that my friends that own other businesses that want to have masks in their businesses. If they don't have backup from you as the city council, they won't be able to enforce it themselves. I will also not be shopping in any store in Mankato that does not require a mask. And I feel like if my kids don't go back to school this fall, that's gonna limit my ability to work.
Thank you, thank you, Megan. Appreciate it. And I want to apologize for anybody else that's waiting to speak. We did have a formal thing where you had to put your name in to. To be able to voice your opinion. We did take about ten other people extra, but now I think we need to move on. Um, with the motion that was on, in hand, is there any comments or questions from the council before we move the motion?
Councilwoman Hattampa has her hand raised.
Please.
Um, can, can Mr. Hentges clarify, when we had talked, um, specifically by appointment businesses. Would be excluded from. Requiring both parties to wear a mask, but I don't see that now specifically listed. Can you clarify where that point is addressed, please?
If at all points in time, they are strictly by appointment, this would not be classified as a public accommodation. However, I believe Mr. Zilke's business is a repair business. If he is. Open to a customer coming in, then it would be classified as a place for a public accommodation. But if strictly their business, and I, I could think of an example would be a, a law office. If there is strictly the conversation between the lawyer and the individual. Well, seated socially distanced from them, they would not be re- able to rare, uh, require a mask. However, if they, for example, would have a receptionist. That would be taking customers in and escorting through it, that would be considered a place of public accommodation. So if it's a single practitioner arrangement, again, there is no. Opportunity for the customers to walk in and interact with a member or an employee of that. Organization, it would not be considered a public accommodation. And, you know, obviously, in this ordinance, uh, we've looked at these circumstances, and we can't list every. Possible exception, but that's how we've looked at it. It has to have the ability for, to be open part or all of the time to be able to have customer. Contact on kind of demand. So that's, that's how we look at it. The second part of Mr. Zilke's question is enforcement. I think I've answered that question in a previous meeting. Yes, this will require, as our traditional. Community policing philosophy is, we warn and we educate. We are currently doing that as the council is aware with a number of downtown businesses, uh, and we've been. Uh, spent the past two weekends going to those businesses because they are not. Following basic executive orders as put out by the governor, which as state, state law. They are state, state law, we're obligated to enforce. And so, as we do in all of our instances. Uh, we do attempt to educate wherever an opportunity is with a warning, with voluntary compliance. In as we start up these ordinances, as we did with indoor smoking and some of these other, um. Uh, issues that we were kind of new ground in terms of educating. So, uh, answering the question again. If it's, if it is a hundred percent customer, uh, appointment only. Uh, except however, there may be certain circumstances that the executive order must, they must comply with. Uh, and then secondarily, if part of the time, however, they are open to the public. Then that is considered a place of public accommodation. Again, enforcement. Will be an education process first and foremost, and it will be, um, uh. Uh, administrative or, uh, potentially a misdemeanor fine if the courts accept that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew how that part worked. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none or hearing none? Ms. Foreman? Did you want to make the motion?
It is, uh, there's already a motion on the floor, perhaps, uh, the city clerk, uh. Ms. Kepeski could reread the motion.
Please.
The motion was to approve the emergency ordinance with the amendment of the age of two being changed to the age of twelve. And it was seconded.
Perfect. So now. Renee, can you please do roll call?
Mr. Fast?
No.
Ms. Foreman?
Yes.
Mr. Deacon? You're on mute, Dennis.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I'd like to say I received four hundred and two emails with two hundred and sixty-six of those being opposed. Um, and also the, um, the results of the G M G, um, survey. Uh, indicate that our business would, uh, would like to oppose, um, and I think the information.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're in the vote roll call right now, so it's yea or nay.
And this is for the, the amendments, if I correct?
It, it is for the ordinance with the amendment, with the amendment, both of them.
Uh, we haven't tried, we haven't tried, uh, a non-mandated, um, non-mandated version of this. And, and, and give the, and give the city a chance to.
And, and, and give the, and give the city a chance to, to prove what we can do. I would not support this.
Ms. Hatampa?
Yes.
Mr. Laven?
Yes.
Ms. Melby Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Massad?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on the required five volts under the emergency ordinance provision of the city charter. Accordingly, it will be effective Friday.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hensh. And thank you, council members, for your time and efforts in this. It was not an easy decision for everybody all around. I think we did the best that we could for our citizens, and I'll continue to say that for a very long time. So thank you for your time. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Frost?
Mr. Frost, Mark Frost made the motion to adjourn. I did not hear who seconded. Jen.
Jen.
Jen, yes, okay. Jen seconded. Renee, can you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Frost?
Yes.
Ms. Foreman?
Yes.
Mr. Deacon?
Yes.
Ms. Hatampa?
Yes.
Mr. Laven?
Yes.
Ms. Melby Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Massad?
Yes. Again, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.